We should be recording. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is ANC 5F regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 20th. It is seven o'clock. I will call this in order since we have forum present. We will start with the approval. Sorry, I'll start a roll call. Starting with Commissioner Jones.
Here, President.
Commissioner Sani.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams is not present. Commissioner Galan, I am present. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Anderson is present. Commissioner Bishop Hensman.
Present.
Present and Commissioners Zenjohn.
I do not see her.
Commissioner Zenjohn is not present. All right, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. This is the forum today. The agenda is posted at ANC 5F for the members of the public that are here will have the opportunity during the public comment to hear from you. We'll start by asking if there are any additions or changes to the agenda as currently noted at ANC5F.com/beaks. Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote for the approval.
Without objection. Move seconded.
Without, I'm sorry, I'd like to move to approve the agenda. Are there any objections? Do it a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Sani. We'll move to a voice vote.
If there's no objection, ask if there's objection, if there's no objection.
Are there any objections? There are no objections heard. Thank you, Commissioner Bishop Hensman. Then the agenda has been approved. I'll move to the approval of the meeting minutes. Commissioner Jones. Go ahead.
Yep. Meeting minutes were drafted and chaired with Commissioners last Wednesday, a little bit delayed, but I got some additional feedback and more details to add in from several Commissioners. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, we'll go to, are there any objections? We'll put a recorded vote here.
There's no objection.
Sorry, is there a second?
I seconded.
Sorry, seconded by Commissioner Bishop Hensman. We'll do a roll call vote for the approval of the minutes. Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Sani.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Not present. Commissioner Galan, aye. Commissioner Anderson.
About aye. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Bishop Hensman.
Aye.
And Commissioner Zenjohn.
Aye.
All right. The eyes of the chair, the vote is six to zero to zero. The meeting minutes have been approved as drafted. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. We'll go to officer reports. We'll start with the chair. I actually do. We'll defer my time and we'll go to Vice Chair, Commissioner Anderson.
So yield my time.
All right, Treasurer, Commissioner Sani.
Yeah, we had a, I guess, an eventful April. The Friends of Met from Branch Trail cashed our grant check, which means at the end of April, our ending balance was forty one thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and ninety four cents. Additionally, with some additional paperwork getting uploaded and thanks everyone on the commission for being very responsive and prompt in getting these signatures. We are now back in good standing with OANC and they were released earlier this month, our quarterly dispersment, reportedly last month, that is. So that'll be reflected in the next bank statement. But so, good news is we're back on a steady path and not in danger of inviting the DC government draft upon us. There's also been some discussion around the EIM associated with our bank account. I think that might be an artifact of the National Bank. erroneously merging our account with a bunch of other ANC under the city CFO, for the CFO under the city. So I'm going to be following up with whatever people have handy and more commissioners for commissioners' reflections if we do have one. If we do, getting it corrected. If not, then seeing if we can actually remove the EIM from our account just to stop OANC from flagging it. I don't think it matters if it goes, you establish, Commissioner Galan, unless we hire or contract anyone, but just make sure we are not making that mistake. In the future, we'll try and take that out in the next, uh, month or so. That is it for me.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Sani. Secretary Commissioner Jones.
Never quite.
Never quite. Thank you very much. We will now move on. I would just make a note that I see Commissioner Williams has joined us. Thanks for joining us, Commissioner Williams. We'll start in the public comment period. We have up to two minutes per speaker. This will, you know, anyone who's present online or in person will have the opportunity for a couple of minutes to chat about any subject. We'll let all the commenters or the members of the public comment and then Commissioners have an opportunity to respond if they wish. So we'll start, open the floor, both here in person or online. Please raise your hands and we'll go from there. Yes, and we have someone here in the room. Can you identify yourself in roughly where the neighborhood you live?
Should I move up? Is there?
Yeah, this is.
Hello, I'm Julia Hetland. I live in Eckington. I'm right up the street. Kelly is our ANC. And I am here to promote Free DC. Those of you in person can see my shirt. You may already know about the organization, but I found them to be very effective and they're extremely active right now. It's an organization that's promoting and protecting DC Home Rule. And right now they're very active lobbying for the DC budget, which is being held up in the House. They also had a very successful campaign against Ed Martin, which his nomination was pulled. They organized recess at the Capitol, which was on a day off of school for DC public schools, and we brought all of our children to the Capitol to go to senators' offices and ask for our money, which, which, I mean, then the senators unanimously passed the bill to fix it. So now it's with the House. I think we didn't have enough people to get all the House, you know, there's so many more representatives. So we want more people to get involved. The best way to start is with the campaign orientation and they have a bunch of them scheduled. There's one next Wednesday. There's one on June 4th, June 10th, June 25th. There's online, in person. And they have lots of other events coming up on freedcproject.org. And I'm happy to speak with anybody or answer any questions about them. I've really, it's uplifting for me, my involvement with them. So I wanted to share that. And then if I have one minute for like unrelated thing.
Sure.
Because I have two things. I also am the community liaison for the, I can, the Harry Thomas Forest Garden, which some of you may know about too. So we have a volunteer day on June 8th. It's a Sunday morning. It's the back corner of Harry Thomas Park. We have a mulberry tree that is like the berries are ready for eating.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's greens, there's like figs, blueberries, blackberries. It's a community space. It's open to the public. It's wonderful. So also happy to take email addresses if you want to learn more or answer questions about that.
Can you repeat the organization for the second one?
Yeah. Um, it is the Langley Forest Garden. It was actually funded by D dot Urban Forestry. And I, I don't know, I could want to take over the meeting, but like we're also, I'm also concerned about the Harry Thomas Center renovation and wanting to make sure it's incorporated in there. It is another city project, but those don't always speak to each other. Anyways, it's also supported by the Langley PTO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I see if there's any, I see your hand, Ms. Zenjohn. We'll see if there's any more members of the public and then we'll all recognize you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to mention anything? Yes, I see Ms. Vaughn. Apologies if I mispronounced your name. Go ahead. Do you recognize?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm actually a Realtor. I am speaking out today on behalf of my client who lives at fifteen Todd Place. We are, and I have also been in contact with some neighbors who might be at the meeting there, that we are having a serious rat infestation in the alleyway behind Todd Place, T Street, and then it kind of tees into North Capital Northeast. It seems that these rats are basically outpacing any efforts that have been done by some of the community members, and I know some may be on this call, some may be there in the audience. And we just really need, we've done a lot with working with DC rodent and vector control. We have had neighbors clean and remove bins that are broken and chewed through. We've, you know, educated renters on sort of effective ways to manage their trash. But again, we're just hitting a wall. So, and it is affecting home prices. My, the home has been on the market for two months. And the seller, in an effort to keep the rats out of her yard, just spent seven thousand dollars to hardscape her backyard only a week later to have the rats burrowing from the alley underneath the concrete slab. Three one one has been effective. We need trash cans though on Todd Place because it looks like people just throw their, you know, their trash in the, in the street. I'm sure T Street and North Capital have the same issues, but we're basically asking for three things. And we have a longer email that we can send to you if we haven't already. First, we're asking to enforce the existing trash laws with real consequences. That includes ticketing for cans left out or illegally dumped on the sidewall of the home that I'm, every time I come for open house, I'm moving trash cans. They need to be put back in their yards. We need posting signage with penalties, holding landlords accountable for tenant compliance. Second, and we think this is sort of an easy lift, but you tell us, increase trash pickup to twice a week. A lot of the homes have been converted into multi-unit condos. This is adding to the density. And our sanitation must be met with the needs of this growing population in this small area. I'm sure they don't want to open a trash can and have a, you know, a band of rats flow out. Twice weekly would really help. Third, we would love a pilot program, a small grant for a pilot program for some real solutions. Install a rat-proof communal compost bin, like the one in front of Big Bear Cafe. Test control pests, I'm sorry, contra pests for fertility control and activate the alley with planners and lighting to recreate a better neighborhood. So we have buy-in for neighborhood ownership and likelihood to keep it a wonderful and safe place that it is. I don't know if anybody else in the neighborhood, there have been many neighbors leading this effort. I have joined in because I am, like I said, just listing a home, but it's just a wonderful neighborhood and community. And I know that the alley can also be a way of connecting with neighbors, but nobody wants to go back there.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. And I do appreciate, I was the one, I think I sent an email. Thank you for responding. I did get those trash cans removed, but now I know it was with the help of these neighbors. We were actually working in, in, you know, working together. And I do, you know, if you guys had anything to do with that, I really do appreciate it. But these neighbors are working really hard to make their neighborhood and their street and their alley, you know, just a nice place that it is to live. And I don't always see that in every neighborhood. And I am in every neighborhood in DC. So it's a very special group of people.
Thank you so much, Ms. Vaughn. And again, we're going to have, Commissioners may have the opportunity to respond, but we're going to go through additional public comment. Kems, you recognized?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kemi and I just wanted to thank Jennifer for vocalizing our concerns. I live on T Street in Northeast. And so, you know, together with some of my other neighbors, we have been working to address and remediate the rodent issue that we have in the back. You know, Jennifer clearly articulated our ask and, you know, we're really hoping to come together as a community and with the city to to treat the issue. It's a major issue. You know, Jennifer has, you know, mentioned, you know, the issues that we're having. We also have neighbors who, in addition to spending money on their properties, are spending a lot of money on servicing their cars because rats are burrowing in our cars. I personally just spent money having my sensors replaced, you know, having my engine redone because of the damage that, you know, rats did. And, you know, these homes, you know, they're, they're beautiful homes, they're expensive homes. We're paying property taxes. And it's really shameful that we can't enjoy the alley. We can't come out to the back. We're terrified to walk in the evening time. We're hearing sounds when we're on our private decks. I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing to have friends come over and to have to kind of, you know, preface, just, don't worry, you know, you're okay, or, you know, you might see something scurry. So we really, really want to get together and, you know, try and, you know, fix the issue. We have made some progress, but as Jennifer stated, we just need to, we need, we need, we need more help. And if you haven't received the email, please let us know because we've outlined everything via email.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer.
I see Sheila Tyson. You recognized?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Um, I live in the Edgewood campus. I'm in a senior housing in Edgewood. And I wanted to participate after talking with Mark last night, I don't know if he's there, who came to our Edgewood Signal Association meeting. I'm speaking on behalf of the seniors here on this change to the buses. You might have seen some of the seniors here on Channel Four who were able to get the bus stop to stay. They were actually going to remove it. And I don't think people really understood removing these bus stop and how it impacted on seniors who were in wheelchairs, on walkers. But I learned through this process what they consider a block. But we're talking about almost three blocks for them to actually walk from Seventh Street to Fourth Street to get the bus that takes them directly to Washington Hospital Center. That bus generally came up Edgewood Street and made a roundabout to, it went around it like in a circle, like, and my understanding is they don't want to, they want to cut down on the speed or to save time, whatever the issue is. They made a bad decision at the senior housing around the city. Edgewood is not the only one. Fort Lincoln and other people are talking about the bus route and the bus stop. Unfortunately, many of these seniors weren't at the table and ANC wasn't there to represent them. So I'm asking for support for these seniors to continue the, having the bus, I think it's the DA or either the GA, I'm not even too sure, that comes up Edgewood. They were able to rally the support to keep the bus stop in our driveway on Edgewood, but they haven't been successful to keep the bus to come up to Edgewood Street. Because we really do have a lot of people in walkers and they use the bus. And for them to walk all the way down to Fourth Street, that may be a real problem. So I, I don't know how we go about this because ANC did not present a resolution or anything. So if you can tell me what your ANC can do to help us with the buses, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tyson. And yes, this is Mark. We spoke yesterday.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any other members of the public? I'm not seeing any hands. We will move to comments back from Commissioners. Commissioner Zenjohn, recognize you. I know you wanted, your hand raised earlier.
Yeah, so, um, first of all, so by San Jack and I participated in the going to the Hill and lobbying members of Congress. It was a really wonderful experience. I really encourage everybody to get involved at that level. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough at that time. So really appreciate the comments from Julia, or Julie, sorry, on that.
Julia, you have.
Yes, Julia, I want to keep working with you on that. And, and again, a lot of that is out of our control, but I'm with you. Again, I'm bringing my kid. I'm, I'm, I'm with you 100%. He's here right now. Do you want to say anything?
Please. I think I left them, I think I left that a car out.
Okay, so he has nothing to contribute to this particular conversation. The other thing I want to address is obviously the rat issue. So I personally have gone and in the last week, tried to personally clean up that alley because it is, it's a thorough way for, you know, all of us parents. And I know it's been an ongoing struggle, not just for you as a Realtor, but for the people that live there. And we are, we are really working hard to, to help with that. Unfortunately, the rats are just bigger than us, right? And so it pains me to hear, and I've dealt with it in my own home, just, you know, you redo your yard and the rats are still going to infest them. But what we can do is try to clean up that alley. And that alley is just.
ANC purpose for Eckington.
In Eckington. So Todd Place, right? So it's, again, a thorough way for, in between Lincoln Road and, and if I'm understanding correctly, the one we're talking about, a thorough way from Lincoln Road to the school. And it, 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 it's unsightly. It's, it's absolutely awful. We are working really hard. I have been following up on all the three one one requests. And that's really, oh, okay. Sorry, guys. Sweetheart, I'm on a call. I, again, I personally have gone and cleaned it up. We're doing our best. So I want you to know that you're seeing, you're heard. I get it. And we are doing everything we can on that.
Thank you, Commissioners Zenjohn. Commissioner Williams. Do you recognize?
Sorry, I just had a tooth extracted. Um, first of all, I have been working with, with Motta outreach people about this removal of the buses on Edgewood Street. Secondly, as far as the rodent problem, have you reached out to DPW and inquire about the rodent abatement program? That might help in some areas far as the rodent on Todd Place.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I'll allow, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Bishop Hensman.
Yes, thank you. Just to add a little bit more on the rat issue, I just got an email that the budget hearings have been scheduled for the upcoming council budget season and on June 17th, Councilmember Nadeau will be holding a hearing on DPW, the Department of Public Works, which is the agency that could give us more litter cans, more secure rat-proof litter cans, more frequent pickup of trash, enforcement of people that violate littering rules. I'm planning on testifying. I'm happy to share stories that people have that, that has a big impact. If you want to testify and you've never testified before, it's, I mean, it's, it's an open process. You can sign up if you're terrified of that. Message me, message Commissioner Zenjohn, we'll walk you through it. We'll show you how to do it. It is a problem and it's not just in that corner of Eckington. It's all over the neighborhood and neighbors are doing a lot on it. They're putting out their own litter cans, they're cleaning up. We've got community groups doing a lot of cleanups, but we really need the, the, people are absolutely right. The city needs to be doing more on this and that agency is DPW and the more united front we can present on that, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bishop Hensman. Ms. Vaughn, I'll allow like a short response time only because we're over a little time here, but go ahead. You recognize.
Can you hear me? Thank you. I do appreciate all the efforts. That's all I wanted to say is I, we do, I think we do feel heard. We do appreciate the efforts, but locally, we do believe it is something that the city does need to be aware of. If you could repeat the DPW date and time, please.
Sure. It's June 17th at noon. It's Councilmember Nadeau's committee. And information on, should be available on the DC Council website eventually. I just got the email. I'm sure it's not up there yet, but it will be to sign up to testify.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then they take submissions in addition to, you know, showing up on the Zoom all day, waiting for your turn to testify.
Yeah, I'm not afraid to testify. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I see a couple more comments. We'll, we'll just keep them short only because we've already gone through public comment period and responses, but. Sandrine, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sandra Keish, community member of Eckington as part of this rat group for our alleyway. I'm sorry I'm late. I had a lot of trouble finding the room. I went to that building and then this building. So I'm sorry I'm late. So I just wanted to reinforce the messaging from my colleagues that were talking here. So three key messages that we're asking for. First, enforcing the existing trash laws with real consequences. So that includes ticketing for cans left out, posting signage to keep, make sure that everyone is aware that there are penalties and holding landlords accountable for tenant compliance. Because that is, you know, it's obviously an issue of awareness and enforcement. Second, we think that we need to increase trash pickup to twice a week. Currently, we only have once a week. We've had, you know, we've had rising density in our neighborhood. We've had rising property taxes in our neighborhood. And, and our services must meet the needs of this growing population. That would be the second point. And the third point is to support a small grant to pilot real solutions that are creative, such as, for example, installing rat-proof communal composting bin, like the one that's in front of, in Bloomingdale, that's in front of the Big Bear Cafe, which is rat-proof and where the food is placed inside like a metal bin. which is rat-proof and where the food is placed inside like a metal bin. That way, it removes the food source from our plastic cans. And then there's this issue of, you know, rats aren't dying as quickly as they're having babies, basically. So addressing not just the killing of the rats, but also the fertility control of the rats. There's a I think there's a testing product called Contra Pest that's been tested in other cities like New York and San Francisco. And I believe there was a pilot program in 2023 with DPW. But there's no information online on what actually came out of that study. But we would like to request that we be a pilot alley for that if that's possible. And also to activate our beautiful alleys with planters and maybe some additional lighting to create neighborhood ownership and care of our alleyways, because it is a real public opportunity of public space and neighborly and community engagement. So those would be our three asks. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. This is Rupesh. And yeah, yes. Commissioner, you can go for it.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
Okay. Just.
Mr. Clark, say who you are. Say who you are, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, yes.
I'm Michael Clark. I'm the top place. I'm president of the Agency Association. The rat issue, it's been issued for number of years, I've been in the community for number of years. Agency to connect with, it's not DPW, it's Department of Health. So Department of Health handles all the rodent abatement, animal stuff, all that. I've called numerous times for alley cleanup, 3-1-1. They have come out within 10 days and they cleaned the alley, that alley a number of times. And on the alley between Todd Summit, the neighbors, Department of Health has a I guess it's a sheet you can go around and get all the neighbors to sign it who want DP, Department of Health to come into your yard and abate in your yard. And they will come and do a clean sweep through the whole alley to abate the rodents in that area. So Department of Health has that. They've got it on some alleys in Eckington. I know previous Commissioner Sylvia Pinkney did that, and others have done that. So that's something that's available. But the alley cleanup, they've come through, they will ticket. I've gotten tickets. They weren't legit. I got tickets. They got, they ticketed me for my trash cans being out, but it wasn't my address. It was addressed on Second Street. So the picture was clear. So I had to go and fight that so they can get rid of that. But if you walk down any alley in Eckington, you can do it, well, not tonight, but you can do it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and you've got cans all out in the alley. And the city just is not going to take it. You know, thousands of residents because they got the cans out. And I think it would be advisable, and we've had them at our meeting a number of times, that Department of Health, the abatement team, rat abatement team, to come out to speak to you. And when they come out, they say three things that increase the rat population in our city. Development, small restaurants, small businesses, and dogs. And on their website, it said dog species has a lot of nutrients. I was at a rat symposium some years ago. It's like an energy bar for rats. So even though we may think we're cleaning up behind that, we're not. So those are some of the things that we can do as a community. But I think using 3-1-1 is very effective, and I've used it a number of times. Had that alley cleaned out. And then they just call them, and they'll come out and they'll do it.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, go ahead. Commissioner Jones?
I think related to the rats, I think we've covered everything, but I do want to say that I'm sorry it's impacting the quality of your lives. I think it's horrible, and I feel bad about that. But I think we, as a commission, will kind of work to see what we can do and try and support you. I did have a, I think Sheila Tyson had mentioned the bus stop issues related to seniors specifically across the city. I do wonder, I know there's not an agency, but I think an office, Age Friendly DC, and they're working to, I think in the fall, they're planning to do assessments throughout the city, I think especially in five, seven, and eight in terms of age friendliness and like walkability. I think it's more specific, like thinking about older adults, but also thinking in terms of like what's safe for both like children and people getting around. So I wonder if that might be someone to reach out to in terms of like bus-related issues specifically for seniors. I think their contact with Wamata is Nikia Bradley. I don't know if anyone here knows that individual. But I wonder if following up with them, having the specialty of age friendliness might strike a chord there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I see two other hands. Kimmy, I think you had your hand up briefly. Just a quick response, if that's okay. You're recognized.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to quickly reiterate that, you know, we know about 3-1-1. As I mentioned earlier, I'm one of the residents on T Street. We constantly call 3-1-1. We've gone door to door and gotten signatures from Todd Place, from T Street, from North Capital to have Department of Health come to our alley and treat it. We've been working with Andre Pittman and his team. Andre has been amazing. Prior to Andre coming, when we would make the 3-1-1 request, we would have a different inspector come. He would not treat the alley. He would come in, maybe, you know, go to one borough, and then he would leave. So we've done that. You know, we're doing our part, but we really need the city to step up. Part of the problem, too, is when DPW, when trash collectors come to collect the trash and to pick up recycling, they're part of the problem because they're leaving trash in the alleys. We have it on our cameras. I've seen it with my own eyes, where they see the trash that they've dropped in the middle of our alleys, and they keep going. They scatter the recycling bins. They don't put them back where they collect them. So we also need the these agencies to do their part just as we're doing our part. And, you know, it's not enough to just like feel bad. We really want to take action steps to remediate and treat the issue. But that's going to take the city to do more than they're doing now. We're doing as much as we can, and we just want to collaborate and come together and, you know, tackle this issue. So that's just what I wanted to say is that we're taking advantage of the resources that we have, but it's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimmy. I'm going to wrap this up a little bit since I know we've gone 30 minutes past. The one thing that I'll note is that I'm hearing that there's a lot that's already kind of happening in the background and that's engaging on. It has been my experience that commissioners can help elevate these issues to the relevant agencies, and agencies can be more responsive. I think Commissioner Bishop Henchman's example of testifying is good. I've had good responsiveness in testifying myself. But yeah, you know, commissioners, if you're interested in leaning forward and assisting with this effort, you know, using your agency contacts to do alley cleanings. Department of Health was mentioned. DPW was mentioned for alley cleaning. Department of Buildings also does engagement on enforcement of landlords and tenant laws for not maintaining those systems. And I know there are some new commissioners who may not have all of this information. So if you have questions, I encourage the folks who have been talking to email all of us. You can just do the 5f@anc.dc.gov, and that will go to everyone. I don't think I've seen this particular email, but that can help as well. So I appreciate everyone taking some extra time to discuss this, and hopefully we can get some additional resources to further this challenge that you're having. Moving on to announcements from commissioners on item six, I'll just ask if there are any additional announcements from commissioners that would like to be noted at this time. Yes, sorry. Commissioner Bishop Henchman, yes, go ahead.
I'll rapid fire this. I know we're eager to move on. The DC budget should be released publicly May 27th. I'm going to turn immediately to see, to make sure the library is still in there and on schedule, and then to see if the Noma Third Station is still in there and on schedule. There are other things that we want to be paying attention for. Please let us know. You know, I guess there's like the whole rest of the government, but such is our life right now. We have a new sidewalk that's been built on T Street, as well as a little fragment of a sidewalk on Fifth Street. It was literally the first new sidewalks of the year in the city. I was at a DDOT hearing yesterday where they were talking about their accomplishments for the year, expecting to hear about stuff all over the city. This is all they talked about because it's all they've done this year so far. So thank you to them for our new sidewalk. And thank you to everybody for, you know, we had to move around parking on certain days and have some construction activity and appreciate. Similarly, the repaving of Eckington Place, including the installation of bike lanes there. I know that's been a bit noisy, but it looks like we're past the worst of it. Thank you for everybody on that. And then this has already been mentioned, but Wamata's new bus network will be going into effect June 29th. All buses are changing. At minimum, they're changing their names, if not where they go and where they stop. So check it out at wamata.com. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I will make a quick announcement. Yesterday, I attended the Edgewood Civic Association, and there was a lot of discussion about the Lincoln Protected Bike Lane project and making sure that we engage community members. And I know, you know, my particular SMD has a section. I know at least two or three other commissioners that have sections that are directly affected. And I want to hear from members of the public. So please let us know your comments on the Lincoln, or let me know kind of how you feel about the proposal. You can Google the DC Lincoln Road Protected Bike Lane to get more details. There's a formal DC site, which we can post in the chat as well. But I will plan on doing a single-member district discussion with folks, hopefully in the next couple of weeks or so. That's all I have. Any other commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I will move to announcements from representatives of elected officials. Mayor's Office Community Relations, Anthony Black. I do not see him on the line. So we'll move on to War Five Councilmember Office, Zachary Parker. Do we have maybe Oliver on? See him either. Thank you. All right, we'll keep on moving then. There is.
Got to see the council member Ann Oliver at the opening of the Edgewood Trader Joe's.
Yes.
Last week, which we're all very excited.
Yes, there was a new grocery store opened up in Edgewood. Some people think it's in Brooklyn. That's up for debate. Some circles, not our circle, but so moving along to, there aren't any presentations relating to agenda items. I think on the consent agenda in terms of resolutions today, moving right along, you attend the action agenda. There is the approval of the modified QFR. I'll let Commissioner Sani talk that through.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. At our meeting last month, we approved our QFR for, I believe, Q2 of 2025. After I reached back to ANC to submit it, they pointed out that I omitted the disbursement that we received for according allotment from January. So I amended the report. I had not fully submitted it yet, so I could do that. But because I've amended the report, I need to bring it back to the ANC for a full vote. So the revised QFR now also shows that we received an allotment of $4,702.97 in FY '25, quarter two, in addition to the sole grant we had already voted to approve. A lot of there. So that is the only addendum to the report is the disbursement, the allotment. But that is identical to that which we voted to approve last time. So yeah, I guess open to questions, comments from commissioners.
Right, seeing none, hearing none. Give an action.
I moved to adopt the modified QFR as drafted.
For quarter one.
For quarter two.
Quarter two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Bishop Henchman. We'll go to a roll call vote for the approval. Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Sani.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Galvano, aye. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop Henchman?
Aye.
And Commissioner Zenjohn?
Aye.
All right, I'm the chair. We have some 7 to 00. The approval of the modified QFR, quarter two, has been approved. Thank you very much. We'll move on to other reports and presentations. We have two this evening. One is a BZA application on square 3,555, lot 800. Believe we have a couple people. It should be Alexandra and I believe Shai Nair. Alexandra, you have been recognized. For folks who want to follow along, I'm going to do a quick link to the presentation that was submitted. Alexandra, go ahead. You are recognized.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Alex Wilson. I'm from Sullivan and Barrows, and I'm a land use attorney for the project. And I'm here with Shai Nair, who is the owner of 321 Channing and 321 Rear Channing. And if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen. I have a quick presentation, hopefully fairly quick. Shai owns this lot, and she's planning to construct a single-family home on this alley lot. It'll be relatively small, as alley homes are required to be. But she needs BZA relief in order to do this. The alley lot itself is relatively large. As you can see, it's about the same size as the street-facing lots here. Again, she's planning to live in this home, and single-family homes on alley lots are permitted typically by right without going to BZA, so long as you have access to the street, either via a 24-foot wide alley or a 15-foot wide alley, so long as it's 300 feet from the street. And most alleys in DC aren't 24 feet in width. And this one is 15 feet in some parts, except it narrows specifically right here as it goes to Fourth Street. This doesn't, it doesn't look like it here, but the survey shows that it's about 12 to 14 feet in here. And so for that reason alone, we have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. It requires special exception review primarily so that Fire and Emergency Medical Services can review and confirm that this is still safe, safe for someone to live in this spot. And they have weighed in. We have a letter from FEMS in the record. They have no issues with the proposal. DOB has already actually issued an address of rear channing. And she is proposing an easement for direct access to Channing Street. And then there will be parking for this property on this lot here, lot 111. And so all other aspects of the project are by right, and we would not need BZA except for this alley narrows a little bit. This is the rear of the property, the rear fence line where the alley ends here. And then this porch is going to be removed, and there will be an easement for direct access. Even without the easement, this would meet the zoning requirements, but the easement will will help with additional safety concerns. And so we safely meet the BZA requirements. It has three times the, nearly three times the required amount of square footage to develop an alley lot. 450 square feet is required. It will just be one dwelling. The lot connects to a public street via an alley system. And again, the relief is being requested because the alley narrows, but FEMS has no objection, and we expect the Office of Planning to recommend approval as well. And then this is the project. I thought we had the architect joining us, but it's fairly straightforward. Oh, I see Carlos is on if there are any questions, but it's a small alley dwelling, two bedrooms, one bath on the second floor, and living and kitchen. And I'll zoom in here. It's set back at least five feet from all of the other properties. That concludes the bulk of the presentation, but we are happy to answer any questions you all might have for the public.
Great, thank you very much, Alex. We'll start with questions from the public. I see, is Carlos the lowest? I see, is Carlos the lowest iPhone?
Yeah, he's the architect, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Are there any comments from members of the public? Or Carlos, since you have your hand raised, would you like to be recognized to add anything? Are there any questions from commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Sonny.
Thank you for this concise presentation. You said there'd be five feet on either side of the property. Does that include the easement that will be put in place for access to the back from, from, I think it was Channing?
So the easement would be through the 321 property for access? So there's the, if you can imagine, let me see, this might be easier to jump to the front side or here. So, this property here will have the easement. And so there will be access directly on, through this property to Channing Street.
Thank you.
Do you have apologies if I missed it, do you have a photo of the alley lot?
Yes, I do. So it appears right now to look like the backyard, but this is actually where the, where the property line ends. So it'll be about five feet from, from here.
Got it, okay.
And it'll be smaller and scaled to, or two stories and 20 feet tall.
Got it.
And yeah, 27 by about 16, so quite, quite small. And this shows the relationship here from the existing home.
Okay, okay, yeah, I see that. Thank you, I'll recognize you in just a second, Commissioner Williams. Another question is, when is the, when is the BZA hearing? I apologize if I've missed that, you said that.
No worries, it's June 25th. It was moved a couple of times because we did want to secure that rear address from DOB before moving forward.
So, if I'm not mistaken, if the ANC wishes to take a position on this particular request or variance, you would need it by the 25th, is that correct?
Yes, of June, yep, correct.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
Can we go back to where you said, or did you say? Can you clarify this part for me? That that house that's on Channing Street let's stay in position? Or did you say that will be removed to have access?
So that's going to stand position, the home? There is a sort of added on porch addition right about here. That's going to be removed for access. And I can show you the porch, it's, yeah, this little, that's what's going to be removed.
Clear walkway.
So that's a walkway or would it be a driveway? Which one will it be?
So it's not a driveway, there's no curb cutter existing parking here. So this added little add-on will be removed and it'll be a walkway from this building to Channing. If needed for access. So for pedestrian egress and access.
Okay, so just the door sits sideways. Will that house door, would the door be moved to, what's that, Channing Street? On Channing Street instead of on the side of the apartment? I mean, the house. Or would this entry to that home still be at that location on the side of the house?
Carlos or Shai, what's the plan for the, I think this is the side entrance, but I'll defer to Shai.
To be honest, we haven't developed that plan yet. But this is a positive note. It may be that this side porch remain and we work out another set of stuff off of the porch that allow access through this side yard into the rear leaves. I'm sorry, into the rear. But we haven't got into that development yet. But there's that, you know. Is not really part of the BZA application. But we can further that, develop that if we need. If we need to sell it to be a decision.
And Ms. Nair owns both properties, so it shouldn't be an issue if she wanted to keep the side entrance. It would just be written in the easement there, shared access.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you for your time, Alex, Shay and Carlos. If there be, there may or may not be an action at the next, if the ANC wishes to take a position at our next general meeting, which will be, I think, right before that, that hearing.
Okay, great, we'll just keep in touch with you and thank you so much.
Sounds great, thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too. Moving on, we have a presentation from River Smart Homes Program DOE, Sky Webster. I believe, I do not see them, but is there someone else from that? Team who's present? Don't believe so. I know, me too. I was hoping he would talk.
Maybe we're moving too fast for that.
Yeah, maybe. All right, well, we'll go into the, oh, one of the last portions of the agenda. Move on and go into committee and task force update. We'll start with the Alcohol and Cannabis Licensing Committee, Ms. Coughlin. You're recognized.
Hello, thank you, I'm Melissa Coughlin, I'm the Chair of the Alcohol and Cannabis Licensing Committee. We met on the 12th of May to discuss a couple of renewals that are happening in ANC 5F. Specifically, we discussed the renewal of the alcohol license at Bus Boys and Poets on Monroe Street. Of Dance Place, for which we have an existing settlement agreement that's located on 8th Street Northeast. We talked about the renewal of the Crucible, which is a club on V Street Northeast, and then Alamo Cinema and Drafthouse. We reviewed our community feedback and I actually just threw a link in the chat for anybody who wants to contribute to community feedback. We didn't have any negative feedback or any other negative community concerns. And so as a commission, our recommendation, or sorry, as a committee, our recommendation to the commission was to take no actions, so no protests. And our next meeting is going to be on the 4th of June. We do have a new restaurant that has applied in ANC 5F06. It is Alaro Restaurant at 202 Florida Avenue Northeast. This is Commissioner Bishop Hinchman's, a single member district. We have been in communication with the applicant and they are going to attend the ACOC meeting on the 4th. And give us a presentation about what their restaurant is, hours of operation, kind of what their intended plans are for the space. So if anybody would like to attend that, we meet at 7:00 PM online. And I think that's everything that I have for the Alcohol and Cannabis Licensing Committee.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Coughlin. Are there any questions from commissioners or members of the public?
Just so people know where this is, in case people want to know where this new Mexican restaurant may be. It's in the Washington Gateway Building, also known as the building that you connect from the MBT to Florida Avenue through, through that bike lobby. Includes a request for summer garden license, so an outdoor space. So certainly send in feedback to either me or to the forum that Ms. Coughlin talked about. So that the, our alcohol committee can, can review it before June 4th. And then I imagine it may come to the commission in, in June for action.
Commissioner Bishop Hinchman, what are the hours that they are requesting?
I knew you were gonna ask that. If I could just stall for 10 seconds as I pull it up. So, inside on Friday and Saturday till 3:00 AM. And then live entertainment inside till 3:00 AM and then carry out till 1. I'm actually not seeing the summer garden, oh no, summer garden is same hour, so like, I think we probably need to settle my agreement on this one, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if you live in that building or near that building and have any thoughts about that, please let your commissioner know.
Is it the hotel on one side and then?
Uh, might be one block, one block away. Because I think that's all apartment buildings there.
Okay.
There's a couple of them all around that, that loop under the New York Avenue Bridge.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions from commissioners or the public? All right, thank you, Ms. Coughlin. We'll move on to Public Safety and Health Committee, Mr. Daniel Aaron Price, thank you.
Yes, thank you commissioners, good evening neighbors. For those that don't know me, my name is Daniel Aaron Price. I am the Chair of ANC 5F's Public Safety and Health Committee. We've definitely been keeping busy over the last month. We had a short meeting earlier last week. There's a lot of happenings within the community right now, since we're heading into summer. So kept it nice and brief for this meeting. Our next meeting is going to be rescheduled, it was originally scheduled for June. So just look out for an email very soon with a new update on when that date and time will be. And we'll put that on the website as well for all community members looking to come and join. Some updates for commissioners. So, one, I just want to thank all of the neighbors that spoke about rat abatement and provided some pretty solid kind of action steps to request out of the city. If commissioners are interested, our committee could take on a rat abatement resolution, leveraging some of the language that they placed inside of that email. So just looking to commissioners, if you do have that type of interest, our committee would be happy to take that on, even glad to take that on. So that would be really great. So, again, thank you to all of the community members that spoke out about that. Looking forward to June for the vote on the moped and ATV regulation resolution. So we'll, we'll have that hopefully go forth then, that's fully completed as of this moment. And we're currently working on our next resolution. Community engagement updates, so our committee is currently in the works of reaching out to various community event organizers so that we can request a table at those events. We're realizing that we're a small ANC still and we have a lot of work that we've been doing. So we can use a lot of community assistance and help in a whole bunch of different areas. Happy to report back that Noma Bid is allowing us to table at the vast majority of their events. So we are set up to table at their cinematic events pending all of the rain that's up and coming. Their Sunset Sounds events, their Farmer's Market, which is TBD, they're just looking to squeeze us in for a table. Their Noma in Color event and their Pumpkin Palooza event. So community members that are attending any of those wonderful events, come and stop by our table. So we can chat a little bit about some of your needs, some of the good things that you see in the community as well. And I just wanted to briefly report back, so I tabled at these first cinematic event for Wicked, which was really great. Asked a bunch of community members kind of what they thought were some of the biggest assets of the community versus some of the things they went to see more or less of. The biggest thing that people said was the connections within the MBT. The ability to have more events just like those, which Noma Bid was very happy to hear about. And public safety was only mentioned once. And those that did speak with me about public safety were interested in being a part of the committee. So, still pretty nice, overall very positive things about the neighborhood, just want to see more community and more connections ultimately. More updates, hopefully in the next few weeks, I'll be touching base with Commissioner Zen John to talk through some next steps for a resolution requesting regular cleaning around McKinley Tech and Harry Thomas. Which was kind of a big thing that community members brought forth within our public safety kind of forum that we held at, at Harry Thomas, just a couple of months ago. Update for everyone on the gun violence reduction resolution. So last week I presented to ANC 2C, who was very interested in the resolution. They had a few questions about the resolution, but ultimately unanimously voted to adopt it as well. So more connections will be greatly appreciated. Thus far, the resolution's been passed in six different ANC's, up for consideration in three. And then there are five that are in active talks with me about bringing it to the table. Next resolution that's on the docket for our committee is one on substance use disorder, which is a big conversation that many community members have been talking about. And wanting to see more action on behalf of the city in regards to. There is a piece of legislation that's being considered within DC Council entitled the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025. We are hoping to take a look at that act and hopefully see if there's possibility for us to either support it or ask for even more measures to be placed inside of it on behalf of our community. So we're going to work off that as kind of our framework for this next resolution. Last but not least, just our big community tip, I think this was already mentioned, but it's important to mention again. Harry Thomas is going to be going, undergoing a big update hopefully. And they are looking for feedback from the community. So there's an active survey that is out and do, that survey ends by the end of this month. To access that survey, hopefully we can get a link within the meeting minutes as well. But Councilmember Parker's newsletter always has a link to it. I have no doubt that they'll have a link to it for the next couple of weeks as well. But keep an eye out and please fill out that survey, it's really important for us to hear from community about that. Those are all of my updates.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Mr. Aaron Price, are there any questions from members of the public or from commissioners for Mr. Aaron Price?
Um, the moped resolution.
Yes.
Was that, I think it, you'd, I think you'd give a notice for this meeting, but I guess it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I just dropped.
Just a clerical, okay. So if we could make sure for next month.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Been a busy month.
So, so wait, so wait, did I, did I make notice of it? That it would be on.
You fully noticed it, so, yeah, yeah. It, you did it early, I think.
Yeah, okay.
You can buy Mr. Aaron Price some beers.
Yeah.
Just attend my committee meeting next month.
He's like, how about a beer?
Thank you very much. Transportation and Public Spaces Committee, Commissioner Sonny.
Yes, this past month, the ANC 5F Transportation Committee hosted the dot to have a further, like, public forum to collect input and feedback from neighbors regarding their proposed. Bike lane project on Lincoln Road Northeast. It was a robust conversation and I, like, I feel a lot of folks on the chat speak. And as they noticed, as they told us in last month's ANC 5F meeting, this will not be the only time. Obviously, like Commissioner Avan, you indicated that you'll be doing facilitating for their outreach, but they are planning on having a in-person, open house sort of session on this to collect more feedback and show maybe a little more substantive designs on what a certain proposal could look like. Sometime in June, they are still, I think, trying to lock down the date for that because they are planning on holding it, I think, at every track and just negotiating with summer rec center schedules is not the easiest thing. But please keep an eye out on the bike lanes on DC.gov website for that. There is nothing formally on our agenda for next month, we'll probably be keeping an eye out as I think other committees are on the various budget stuff going on to make sure that. We are not necessarily getting the, the short end of a very short stick on, on this year's budget cycle. Specifically, we are paying attention to make sure that the projects for the Michigan Avenue Connector to the Creston Cycle Track remain, as well as ongoing efforts for. Then, safety improvements have come out of like TSI processes, et cetera. So that'll be, we're just gonna make sure that it's there and if not, figure out the best ways we can educate from within the committee or within ANC 5F in general to ensure that 5F residents are, are served. But yeah, that is it for us.
Great, thank you so much, Commissioner Sonny. Are there any questions from other commissioners or members of the public? Yes.
It's a comment on the, the bike lanes that they would, you know, seem like they gotta run a fast track it. Because, you know, they've got the schedule, the construction starting next spring. So, without having it being truly embedded to the community. And I personally sent an email to Mark, to my commissioner, Jennifer Anderson, and about holding an SMD meeting for the people in the community. Because people in Todd Summit, I talked to the neighbors, they never heard anything about it. So, you know, I'm asking these commissioners. So, you know, I'm asking these commissioners to have an SMD meeting to let their residents know. And it's, you know, these people aren't necessarily connected with the, with our commissioners' email and, and all that. So it'll take some footwork to get out because it's gonna affect, especially for those who live in that Todd U and T Street area because we're, we're blocked in with one-way streets. Just today on Summit, there was a, they hit a, they could put it in pipes and they hit a gas leak. They had a gas pipe and there was a leak. So Summit was closed off. T was, Summit was closed off, Todd Place was closed off. So in order to get to your house, to get to my house, I had to go all the way around to come down to R Street, come all the way up to Leagun Road and come through the alley.
They blocked all the sidewalks?
Yes, everything was blocked off. They blocked everything off from T up to U Street was blocked off. Actually, all the way up to Rollin Avenue, they blocked up to U and Terrace, they blocked it off. So that, you know, we consider those things when we, you know, when DDOT comes and presents and it fast tracks, so I'm just asking the commissioners, especially, you know, those like Anderson and you, you're a career also, Ms. Jones, that we would have an SMD meeting so the residents will know what's coming about. I think that's very important. And just to get back to, I skipped this on the safety view. The MFD was at a meeting last night and they said there's been quite a few snatch robberies on the trail. And people walking with headphones and they're coming to snatch in the headphones and stuff. So that's been on an increase. So they've deployed more officers at certain locations on the trail to make sure that people can be safe. And we talked about the moped and bike resolution that you put together. I'm really concerned about the traffic on the trail. It's supposed to have been a, when it first opened up, there's no motorized vehicles upon the trail.
Still is.
When you walk in the trail, you see bikes coming down during 15, 20 miles an hour.
Bikes, bikes.
Yes. You've got 15, 20 miles an hour, you got people walking the dog, people running. And there's been a number of incidents that hasn't been reported where people have been hit by these bikes and stuff. So that's something that we have to look at because it's getting more and more crowded on that, on the trail now. I mean, all day, all night is crowded. So I think, you know, when we look at safety, public safety, that's something we have to really look at. We have to come together and say, how are we gonna better police this? Who has the right of way on the trail? The bikers think this now is a bike trail, but it's really a community trail for everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
On Lincoln Road. I think it doesn't touch my district, but I think it touches like basically all of the other districts. So you know, rather than an SMD meeting that DDOT's not gonna be at, it's not gonna accomplish anything. You know, I'm glad DDOT presented to our transportation committee. I think they've presented at least once to the full commission. I imagine they will at least once more. They've presented the 5E. And, you know, they're, they're processing the feedback. I think it'd be very valuable if we can get that feedback too, that DDOT's getting, so we can understand what people are writing in. And then as far as awareness, because I do agree with Mr. Clark on, on awareness, you know, zoning is very good about making sure everybody around a property knows about stuff. ABCA forces the placard to be posted, so at least if you walk by, you know about it. DDOT, maybe a little bit further behind those other two agencies in notifying folks. If the commissioners involved want to buy some signage and put it up and down Lincoln Road, you know, I'll post it on something or stake it in the ground or something, just alerting people this project is under consideration. Here's where you send feedback. That's something I would certainly support reimbursing the purchase of if, if that's of interest.
Thank you for that. All right, seeing nothing. Oh, Ms. Anderson, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I definitely would be supportive of that, Commissioner Bishop Hentman. Mr. Clark, let's find time to connect. I did see that happening or I heard about that happening today, which is really unfortunate. But yes, I agree that there are, especially with some of the DDOT projects. I don't know that I get as much advance notice as I would like. I mean, I'm, I'm looking through my emails as well, just to see if I missed anything about any of the alerts I've gotten and I don't know that I had advanced notice. So yeah, let's work together to figure out how we can give community members more notice. I mean, I also think that like being able to have those at the broader ANC meeting, just because some of our SMDs are quite small and it affects a lot, especially in Akeem Town, some of the SMDs are quite small. I think that would be helpful.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. All right, I'll move on to the zoning and development committee.
We've had, had no business.
Yes, no business until now. Oh, now there's more coming. Library Task Force, any updates?
I'm sorry, on zoning, like, well, I mean, you can talk to me offline about this 355, 5800, whether you want that to go there or if.
Yeah, I think I would like to, to send it over and refer it to the committee. So I'll forward that through.
Great.
Okay, yes, moving on to Library Task Force. I don't see Mr. Garrett on. But I know there was a meeting recently. Does anyone have the update on that?
I missed pulling up in minutes for that meeting.
I think I actually have it.
Okay, so they drafted a a letter to they drafted a letter to DCPL to acknowledge well, they're drafting a letter to DCPL to just reestablish and make sure our library's on, on track and that they can continue to be involved. They're also going to be performing site visits to various DCPL recent projects to get an idea of what the, like the various knobs one can turn are on, on, on the library in terms of what is looked like for a library with housing, what is like, the library would like maker space, just to get an idea of what the the current save of the art is basically coming out of DCPL. Also paying attention to what looks like to have other trail entrance libraries to, to make sure that we can holistically include the MBT access as part of that. And their next meeting date is June 10th and they're probably gonna take a summer break for July and August, but June 10th will be the next Library Task Force meeting.
Great, thank you very much. I didn't hear of any appointments to committees or task force. I know you mentioned there may be some additional, do you have names?
One, Caroline O'Shea.
Yes, Caroline O'Shea, yes. I'd like to do by voice vote to Caroline O'Shea to the Committee on Public Safety and Health. She's been a part of the meeting kind of in her advisory capacity the past two or three months or so. So do we have? I'd like to move her to be added. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Bishop Hentman and.
My constituent.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, she has been at it. Thank you very much, Mr. Aaron Price for that.
And on that, Mr. Chair, we've gotten a few applicants over the last couple of weeks. I'll circulate. I mean, everybody has access to it, but I'll circulate it just so everybody has kind of it fresh and maybe move a patch of them in June.
Okay, excellent, that sounds great.
And anybody who's listening who wants to help solve transportation problems, advocate for public safety, find a location for a library and all the other amazing stuff that our committees are doing, it's ANC 5F website and then committee assists the application.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bishop Hentman. That being said, that concludes today's agenda. We are.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Bishop Hentman.
Joe, so fast.
And we have no, and no objections. And this meeting is closed.